I'd like to call to order the PMD meeting. Call roll please.
Mike Dunham. Danny Ragsdale.
Here.
Cheryl Glancy.
Here.
Gina Alvis Watts.
Here.
Travis Millor.
Here.
Joe Barnes.
Here.
And discuss possible action to approve minutes of November 5th, 2020 regular meeting.
I make a motion we approve the minutes for November 5th, 2020 meeting.
I'll second.
Dunham? Ragsdale?
Yes.
Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Millor?
Yes.
And Barnes, you are not here, so we'll mark you as staying.
Discuss possible approved lot split for Jimmy Roberts.
Do I need to read all that? Did she waive the reading of the legal?
Please ask for a motion to waive the reading of the legal.
I'd like to propose a motion to waive the reading.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you so much. You seconded, I didn't catch. Thank you. Can call the public here.
Call for a vote.
Dunham? Ragsdale?
Yes.
Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Millor?
Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Okay. We're open, yeah, for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a, what I would consider, an administrative lot split under the UDO. But because it slightly goes on to the third lot, we felt like that the important thing to do was to bring it before this board and go through the process that's necessary. Basically, what we've got, this location, is two existing homes that have been there for many, many years. And they were at one time owned by a single party. Now they want to split the lots in such a way that those existing homes could be sold separately. And one of the homes has a garage that does not encroach upon the alley, but it is up against the alley itself, which prompted some concerns that we needed to take care of, make sure. Because of the age of this area, the maturity of it, all the utilities are in. So there's not really much of an issue of encroachment. Even though it does not physically encroach, there's not much room, if you're familiar with that site. However, this was an item of what I would consider administrative review and approval. But just for the act, the fact that it slightly by 20 feet goes over onto the third lot, we felt like the thing to do was to bring it before you. Do we ask for a motion to approve?
Or do we want to give any other parties, Jimmy Roberts, can you speak?
Mr. Roberts, on prescription.
Any questions for me or... That's the main thing, is I just need to get this where that one existing home is just on its own lot. So that way, Raleigh can be sold separate from there. That's really the objective here. That's all I have.
Do we ask, do we have any questions, or can we vote on that?
Yes, this...
Does anybody have any questions?
That would be from, that would be from the board.
The board said no.
Madam Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Do I have a second? I didn't catch who seconded. Thank you. Dunham? Ragsdale?
Yes.
Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Millor?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
If I can make a note, there's a lot split approval that I can give you, but our chairman is not here. I'll get his signature first of next week, and then I'll contact you and let you know when I have it ready. Thank you.
By the board, do you have a motion to enter the public hearing?
Item four, I'd like to make a motion to enter a public hearing.
Make a motion we enter a public hearing?
Second.
Dr. Roberts? Dunham? Ragsdale?
Yes.
Glancy? Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Millor?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, since I'll be abstaining on this, I'm going to step down and step to the podium in case anyone has any questions or anything like that, okay?
That'd be great, thanks. You will need to go ahead and read the first part of that, and I guess take a vote to waive the reading again. I need to read the first part of that.
Yes, it says after the theory, that first paragraph.
Danny Ragsdale with RRR Properties Management LLC submitted a plat for property in the city of Pryor, a tract of land situated in the southeast quarter of Section 18, Township 12, north, range 19 east of the Indian Basin, Mays County, Oklahoma. More particularly described as following to it.
Now, the question, a motion to waive the reading of the description of the property.
Move for that motion.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Good. Dunham? Ragsdale? Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Millor?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, staff has reviewed this subdivision. This is a Phase One of a two-phase project for the improvements, infill project at this location. You'll note on the face of the plat that there are a couple of notes there that are required by the UDO regarding the continuation or the planned continuation of the street. We have also made a recommendation to the applicant that the temporary connection to Kauai be included as part of Phase One work on what is referred to as Dawn Street. That will provide emergency access from two locations or two directions onto this property until such time as final decisions made on what they want to do on Phase Two and the continuation of Dawn Street onto another public street that would curve around or whatever might happen in that location. We have made a couple of other recommendations to the applicant regarding items that need to be addressed on this final plat. And those will need to be taken care of, or basically have been taken care of, but will all be taken care of prior to sending this around for signature. Any questions? I should mention that all the utilities, water, sewer, gas, electric, the reason this is being presented to you as a final plat, not as a preliminary, because all the utilities are already there. They were extended in previous additions. So this was a simple land transaction and had nothing to do with the utility extension.
The, on Phase One, which lots are in Phase One? Is it just Block One?
No, sir, it would be, it would be the lots, 1, 2, and 3 of Block Two as well.
Okay.
There is a continuation of the area identified as unplanted.
Okay.
That's the area that would be Phase Two.
Okay.
And as of yet, the applicant hasn't decided how he wants to proceed in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Open the discussion? May I open the floor to the discussion?
Does anybody on the board have questions that I can help answer? Or are we okay with it? This is the first phase. We're still unsure at this time. The only reason we didn't do the second phase, we'll do an addendum to the plat. We're trying to decide whether we want to continue on with single-family dwellings, or we may elect to do the other option is 55-plus living on a, kind of like just south of that, at Savannah area right there, we may do something like that in there. So that's the reason we haven't chosen to submit something for the second phase yet. We're still trying to make determination of what we want to do there. It'll still be real basic and similar, stay with the established character of the neighborhood. Don't deviate from anything in that area. No questions?
Madam Chairman?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, in commission, I'd like to compliment Mr. Ragsdale for identifying infill properties where we can expand our rooftops here in Pryor and take property that is vacant and making that property productive for housing. And my compliments to you, sir. Thank you.
Could you tell us in English where this property is actually located?
I can't. You want to do that, Dan?
It is, you're familiar with Jefferson School, where Kauai Street circles that?
Yes, sir.
If you would go as a crow fly, it's not accessible from Kauai that direction. But if you go on over west of Van Street and come down Sixth Street, which is a dead-end street, it dead-ends into this land right here that we're developing. And then, as Mr. Powell had stated, once we get this sec, first phase...
You started with Jefferson, did you just say Roosevelt?
No, Jefferson.
Okay, I was at Jefferson, but then I thought you said Roosevelt. So this is not interfering with the Hidden Park?
No, no, this is completely, it's about two, three blocks away from the Hidden Park, as a crow fly.
Okay.
I have a question concerning the landowner at 601 South Van. Wanted to put, have an input in this meeting concerning...
If you want to make, go to the podium and state your name and address?
It's a written statement, but I'd like to just enter it and just give a little briefing concerning what she's concerned about.
I'm just a representative for her at the resident of the private property of 601 South Van. She is actually one of the original family members of the one that granted the easement. And she's one of the people that live in the area that her grandfather gave you the easement for this particular street to be built. You've already come over and mapped out the portions in which the land or the street is supposed to be mapped through, past the property line. But the issue that she's had over the past four years is that the people that come by to make bids to purchase the land for development, and she's not having any problem with the development and the progress in Pryor, she wants that to move forward. But it's always some infringement concerning her property and the property line. So for example, people constantly come out and they infringe upon her property line, which has been established in the city for decades, concerning bringing assessments out there and constantly moving into her property line. She wants to make sure that this is not a land grab for any of the portions of the land that she has already established, and that everything should be able to move forward without any problems or issues, just that she would like to have her concerns voiced. Because every time there is some construction in this area, the cleanup is left to her, and the city never comes back to take care of what they started and the debris that they leave on the property. So I just like to enter this letter so that you can have exactly what she stated concerning what she just believes is her right to be heard under these circumstances. And she just wishes that this moves forward without any delay, because she welcomes the divide between the two properties.
What's her name on?
Melanie Teehee or Melanie Edwards. And as I said before, I'll leave this letter for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm not sure what the procedure on this is, do I read it out loud? Do I just enter it?
If he would like to have it read out loud, yes. But if he just wanted to read the record, would you like to have it read?
I would, if it's, if it's at all possible, or do I need to do it?
You would need to do that, I think, would be the appropriate thing.
No problem.
As she stated, please take into consideration, I am the living relative of the original landowner here in the city of Pryor. Much has been done concerning the location and her family, that, you know, her grandparents, she said, and her mother are taxpaying citizens in the general areas to the day that they passed. And that she's still here, and that she sat here in the last meeting concerning the record, and that there was actually no property record concerning, or any evidence concerning her grandfather giving any easement to the city, which was over 50 years ago, which was about in the seventies. She has no issue with the easement, only the issues concerning the measurements and the diameters for her property line that has been questionable when everyone, when someone comes to buy a new property or they come around to do assessments. They walk into her property line, and it appears that sometimes it's a questionable situation. She just wants to make sure that it is not a land grab for her current established property rights. And she goes on at the bottom and says, if she could ask if you would please safeguard her land by allowing the barrier that she put there, or to put a barrier there along that line of where you're building the street so that nothing infringes upon that portion or denigrates or destroys that portion of the land. And that's pretty much how I want to complete this. As I said, I don't want to read it verbatim, I just want to give the basic information, because I'm not certain.
And does she, it kind of, a little bit confusing, is there a barrier there, or is she asking?
Well, yeah, there is actually just, what do you call them? The little steel posts you put there? She has a barrier line post that's straight down that line to keep people from parking and so forth in the property line. But as I said before, those are just regular posts, there is nothing between the posts. So she's just asking if you could honor that line or put something there before construction begins so that there's no discrepancy. Because every time there's a crew or something comes over, they don't have any discretion about where they go, where they park, where their debris and their trash is. So we don't want, and even at, there was another time when someone bought property behind there, and they came and they did bulldozing on the actual property trespassing. And when we called the police, there was nothing that the police would do to stop them. We had to go to the city and make sure that they didn't have a permit for doing construction on the land. So that's the only way that we stopped them from doing construction on the land, because a lot of these people come in and they just infringe on this particular piece of land. Even, as I said before, with heavy equipment, one guy came with a backhoe. So, I mean, I understand her position, and I can't really explain it for her. And as I said before, this letter is a bit jumbled, so...
No, no, you did a great job with that. I just wanted to clarify...
So is there anything else I need to kind of clarify?
I think it's... Do I keep the letter down?
We should keep, copy the letter.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
She books today, she did Arby's, so...
Thank you.
I'd like to maybe help clarify that a little bit. We just recently purchased that land that joins that just as recently as two months ago. And so it was before that was owned by Kozinski, and they had left a lot of debris and been in and out of there from both directions. And that's not our intention at all to do that. We obviously have it surveyed and marked, clearly marked, before we do anything. As well, I know the city was in there doing some right-of-way clearing. And so sometimes people, you know, think they're impeding upon their land when it's actually their land, but it's an easement, you know, that could have been. That's the last, I remember some major construction going through there. But there is some steel post driven there, clearly marking that bear. I have no idea whether that's the correct property line or not, but I assure you, it will be marked, you know, when the surveying is done, at the time that we decided to go into that and, that'd be Phase Two. We have no intention of being over there with Phase One at this time.
So this is the three or three and a half acres across from the elementary school where all the containers were, concrete blocks.
Right, it was the, originally Monty Feather had owned it, and she sold it to Bridger, Kozinski and his mother, Dorse, I think is her name. And we just recently purchased it from that family.
So is that an issue that she would ask that that barrier be identified before?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Would that be an issue that she asked that barrier be identified before? Because you just mentioned something about the surveyors, and that you were a new tenant, meaning a new owner, the previous people, I don't know how they establish what they establish, as I said before. If they're not working within the boundaries of what's already established in the city as our property line, how can they go, you know, and make a new assessment? I'm just...
We won't do anything in there until we have it clearly marked by a licensed surveyor. And then we'll operate off of their markings, you know, to determine what we're going to do in there. The work, obviously, if it be our land, we'll do, you know, whatever we feel is needed to be done on that to further, you know, with Phase Two. But this time, we have no plans to encroach or get upon that area at this time.
I just wanted to clarify something. So I believe what he was trying to clarify was what's already there, the posts that's already there, they're asking that to be the boundary. And because it's been there for so long. And I would like to clarify, because I don't believe that's the case. People have fences up all the time, and they're not their actual true boundary. So they would be surveyed off of the plats.
Yeah, the, I mean, you've drove in that direction, I'm sure, back a few years ago when we were listening, you know, the posts have been there. You'd have to refresh my memory, the posts haven't been there that long, the steel posts have been driven in there probably a year or two?
The posts have been recently put back up, because when you have, when we have a new tenant over there, we assess the situation. Depending upon the people that move into that house that's on that side, they will park anywhere they want on that land. So that's how we assess it, we put those boundaries up. They're not an actual line for the property, but it is within the boundaries.
Yeah, I'm unclear where the, exactly the easement would fall. I'm not familiar with that property. I am familiar with where the steel posts are driven, and I have no way of knowing whether those are correctly placed or whether they are not correctly placed. I don't know.
Are you aware that the street has been mapped out, the length of the street and width at eight?
Yeah, there's been an easement that's been established on there from, that goes up in there approximately just ballpark, a couple hundred feet from Van Street, that it's been there. How long has that been?
It just reopened about three or four years ago.
And prior to that, it was established for quite some time.
It's a right-of-way street, but it was closed by city action many, many years ago. And it was just about three years ago, was reopened as a city street. There's never been no street built. The reason it was reopened was there was a plan being put forth to develop property between there and the Jefferson School, but that never materialized. And so that right-of-way that the city owns through there is still there. And whether it aligns with those posts that they're talking about, I'd have to go, we'd have to be surveyed before we know that. It's pretty close, though. There's a fence on the north side that separates that property from the right-of-way.
Do I make a motion to...
So we're still in public hearing? And if there's no other conversation or questioning regarding the public hearing, then do we need a motion to accept the public hearing?
Is there any questions regarding this?
I'll make a motion we accept the public hearing.
Second.
Dunham? Ragsdale? Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Millor?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Now you'll read number five, which is... No, number five is discussion and possible action to accept.
Madam Chairman, I would recommend, as for staff, to approve this final plat and recommend approval for moving forward with the preparation of the final plat.
Do I have a motion to recommend that? Do you have?
Yep.
Second.
I made the first.
First.
Yeah. He made the first.
I was first.
First? Second, thank you. These masks make it very hard to hear.
That's right.
So do you guys want to discuss that, Annie?
Do we have any discussions on this?
Yep.
No?
Do we have a movement to vote?
I think they...
That's what, so now we can take the vote?
Yep.
Dunham? Ragsdale? Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Millor?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
So at this time, do you go back into a public hearing? Yes, we're on number six now, 6A.
Make a motion to go in public hearing?
I'll second.
Dunham? Ragsdale?
Yes.
Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Millor?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have somebody that... On behalf, you can go ahead and read the applicant part. Applicant, Wallace Engineering, on behalf of TLD Homes and Roosevelt Crossing LLC has submitted a plat for property in the city of Pryor.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we forego the official legal reading.
My second.
Thank you.
We'd like for you to read one.
Dunham? Ragsdale?
Yes.
Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Millor?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Madam Chairmen, we are in public hearing. As staff, we will give you a recap of the project, where it is and where it's moving forward, and then open this up for public comments. As staff, we have reviewed the preliminary plat for Roosevelt Crossing, a development north of... uh, a development, uh, north of, uh, Fifth Street and North Elliott. Uh, this property is currently undeveloped at present time, and, uh, this is a single-family residential development that is in compliance with the current zoning of that property. Uh, we have reviewed the, both their detailed plans, uh, or detailed plan concept, as well as their, uh, plat itself, uh, and made some couple of, several recommendations regarding the, uh, moving forward of that. Uh, I'll mention those at this time. Uh, we recommend that a valid, uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan be prepared, uh, for all areas to be scarified or to be disturbed, and that, uh, they make necessary application to both the city and the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, uh, for those, uh, erosion control practices. We also are requesting a complete hydraulics report for sizing of the onsite detention pond that's proposed, uh, for, for, uh, purposes of determining whether that pond or the area that they have set aside is of adequate size, and a grading plan that, that would go along with that, that would identify that the grading of the site would be drained to that detention facility, or that the net, uh, flow from this site would be zero from, uh, a s- zero increase from what it is now as, as undeveloped property. Uh, it is also noted that the, uh, stormwater discharge from this site will need to be, uh, access to, uh, the, the, uh, uh, open ditch system through an open drainage system, uh, that will cross properties that the applicant does not own. Uh, we have taken measures at this point to, or steps at this point, to contact those two owners and meet with them, along with the applicant, to, uh, determine a, a, uh, way to cross their property to get to the open drainage ditch. Uh, so, all of this needs to happen before a final plat is submitted. All this needs to happen before detailed plans, uh, or, or with detailed plans for the streets, water, sewer, gas, electric, as well as grade.
Is there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I didn't see in the, uh, plat, uh, where exactly the drainage, uh, was at, the retention pond was at. Can anybody answer that? Has it, and I know it's in the early stages, is it not, has it not been put in yet?
Uh, there, there's a, an area identified, uh, as a reserve area for the detention pond. The sizing of that, the grading of it's not there, but there's an area been specified for that detention, so.
Is it on the north end of the property?
Uh, north, be the northeast pro, end of the property. It would be at the, the.
But anyway, yeah, that, I, I know that's in the early stages, but I didn't see it, cause it was posted in the paper, and then I think there's some papers flying around here that, uh, just, I didn't see it. And so, I was, I was concerned about that.
It, it, uh, the detention, the area that has been set aside for a detention facility is at the northeast edge of that property.
Okay.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm not their engineer, their applicant is here. They, they can answer the specifics, but you're right, it's in the early stages, but we are monitoring it to make sure that, that, uh, all of those, all the water that runs off that property is adequately, uh, detained and, and routed to areas that will not cause additional problems on our public streets.
Okay. Uh, I think the next question was, was there, is there gonna still be fifty houses in there? Cause I didn't count fifty, I didn't think there was fifty on that plot that I saw.
Yeah.
Was it exactly fifty? Okay.
Sure. Do you have a fifty degree right now that's still existing with some areas major? I don't have to get at this moment.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
I, I have a question. Happy La Valley, I'm on Clayton Road, um, yeah, twelve, twelve Clayton Road. So, if five years after these properties are built, um, we experience additional flooding in our area, who has responsibility for that? I mean, I'd like it to go on record, I'd really like to know who, five years down the road, when, when the retention pond doesn't hold the water, who's, who's gonna take care of us? I'll let you have that.
Thank you, Kathy. You're consistent and faithful and reliable.
And I like public records.
Sure do. So you asked the question, if in five years, uh, it doesn't work, who's responsible? If in five years, well, the city would be responsible, would it, would they not?
Well.
Yes.
So, so.
So, is that a loaded question today, Kathy?
It wasn't, I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm going back to the apartments that we were told ten years ago, twenty years ago, that this was not gonna be a problem.
Okay, so, so shall, shall we have another discussion about that, or should we discuss?
No, I just wanted on public record, who was going to be responsible for the flooding when it occurs five years after these properties are built?
Okay, so, so we go through.
You've answered my question.
Yeah, we go through our processes, we try to clarify the processes, we try to hone those processes and make sure they're correct. We go through accountability, and so, yes, the ci, the city would be responsible.
Responsible.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Thank you for that clarification, Mayor. Do I have a motion to exit? I think they still wanna talk.
Hi, I'm O.R. Nunley. And I live at nine, nine, six North Elliott. And, uh, the drain from that retention pond, will it go directly west to Elliott? Or did you say it go across some property owners there, before it goes into Elliott?
The, 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 I'm, I'm not the engineer for the developer. We have had communications with them. It is the plan to have an onsite detention facility which the majority of that property will drain through. It is possible, I am not speaking on their behalf, I, we've had discussions in this regard. It is possible that a few of the lots that currently back up to or front onto Elliott Street may drain to Elliott Street as they do now. And it, and of course, as a developed piece of property, there'll be a slight increase in that flow that goes onto Elliott Street. What they'll have to do is over-detein on the property that, that drains to the detention pond that runs onto the northeast part of the property. So that the net leaving this property in the two locations would be zero, a zero increase, okay? That doesn't mean that they have to do it that way. The other way they can do it is regrade the property so that it all drains to the detention pond, and then detain that property for the same net zero process, okay? Uh, the, the intent here is not to increase water substantially onto Elliott Street because of this project, which would be as a result of draining streets or paved areas onto Elliott Street. Cause it's, it's a surface-drained street now, and we're gonna monitor that and make sure that they don't put more water on Elliott Street that, uh, that, because it is a surface-drained street and has no subsurface drainage system.
And how, do you arrive at the average amount of water that's over a certain period of time that'll come in and come down Elliott? Or is it, you know, cause like we had?
Well, there was two, there was two, two things there. Uh, Dr. Nunley, the, uh, uh, you've got a, we do not want a concentrated flow from this property, for instance, going into a pipe or going into, uh, a, a drainage swale that then would just be discharged at one spot out onto Elliott Street. That would be unacceptable, because that, that amount of flow at one spot is not the way that drains now. It's a, it's a sheet-flow operation over the curb. So, that's, that's one thing we're gonna be monitoring at, at all points. S- the second item is, is that we will not substantially increase, or we will not have areas like streets, like common areas that are paved, draining into Elliott Street, because those are impervious areas, and they, the difference between grass areas and impervious areas is, is probably in the neighborhood of thirty to sixty percent of, of increase in water. So we, that's just what I would call a substantial increase in the amount of water going to, to directly onto Elliott Street.
Okay. And Elliott comes to Salt Creek, of course, it's something we've looked at several times.
We are.
Army Corps of Engineers is doing a project right now, or?
Uh, it's actually the city of Pryor, unless I, I, I'm not aware of the co, our army doing a, a study. We are studying Salt Branch, uh, from Maple Street all the way back to above, uh, this property and all the way back to roughly, uh, Gaither Road.
Okay. At least when, uh, you came over and we walked down through there, I thought we talked about the, you know, the Army Corps. Were they expecting that for flooding, or were they gonna do, make some recommendations? I was thinking the Army Corps was gonna make some, I may have been mistaken.
Uh, so, uh. Uh, this is a little off the subject, but it's, it's still in the same drainage area, so I'll, I'll answer that as well. Uh, Salt Branch is a, a stream that is regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers. But the city of Pryor has a floodplain administrator who has given the, 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 uh, authorization to make, uh, maintenance improvements to Salt Branch along your property and adjoining properties at that, at that lower end, in an effort to, uh, bring that stream back to its, its original ability to carry flow. So, even though we will be coordinating with the Corps of Engineers, they're not undertaking any kind of study. What we're doing is bringing the stream back to actually carry the water, uh, at the same level as the Corps Engineers modeled it thirty-five years ago, when they did their study back in the nineteen eighties. Uh, that the stream has been clogged for one reason or another, beaver dams, fallen trees, sandbars, et cetera, et cetera. So our intent is to clean out all the underbrush in that area and to clean out those items that are in, in the, the stream bed itself, so the stream can get the water away in a, in a better manner. We're also taking steps downstream from you, we can go into that at some other time. I, I, you know, we're, we're, everything we're doing is in an effort to try to positively or, or, uh, re, impact the, the, uh, water surface elevation on that stream.
And I feel that we also, to remind everybody that we're not, um, what, I mean, we proposed this to the city council, but we're, we're not the ones that's making that decision. The city council will, will vote on that later, we're just, um, making a recommendation that they, they go before them. There's, there's one more process after this, is.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do I need to come over there and ask?
Yes, please.
It is a public hearing, so we'd like to have your name and address, please.
My name's Carolyn Erwin, I live at eight, two, two North Elliott, I've been there forty-one years. Uh, you said you were going to monitor this once it's built? Okay, monitoring's not gonna help, but what are you gonna do if it is, I mean, if it does? I mean, we have flooding you can't imagine right now. And so, I mean, one more inch is too much, you know? And another question I had is, is there an ordinance? Somebody told me there was an ordinance that in lieu of the ponds, they could pay the city a fee. Is this true?
That, that is true. I want to let you finish your statement, I'll answer.
Well, that's, that was the question.
Okay, that, that is true, but it is not applicable here. They, they, that ord, that ability to pay a fee in lieu of is only with the, uh, proviso that, that they show that there'd be no adverse impact downstream, uh, if they would allow that water to be, uh, discharged and detained. And that's not available here, because there's already properties that are sustaining damage, uh, from that. And we're taking steps separately to take care of that problem, or to reduce that problem. But, uh, yes, there is an ordinance on the books to do that, but it's not applicable here.
Oh, this one, okay. And, uh, um, you said that it was gonna, gonna run into, the excess was gonna run into an open ditch. Is that Elliott Street? Is that the ditch you're talking about?
Uh, no. The, the, the answer to that question is, is that they're gonna have to cross the properties where, uh, to the north of them, which I believe is owned, one of them is owned by the church, the other one is owned by a, someone who, it's a rental property. And, uh, so that, we're meeting with them, and that, there'll be a drainage way that will be, uh, cleaned out and dug, hopefully. Uh, will be cleaned out and dug across their property, uh, to the ditch that runs, uh, that's already there, that runs down, uh, within Bonnie, uh, place, and then it goes down and crosses underneath Elliott Street, uh, at Dr. Nunley's, uh, back entrance. I don't know if you call it that or not, that's what I call it.
So is it gonna go like between the two houses across from me, or? I mean, there's the church, and then there's Mr. Primo's property. Is he the one you're talking about?
It'd be, it'd be, it'd be north of that, the, the, the little short cul-de-sac street that's there, it'd be, it would be north of that. Where the, where the box covert, yeah, where the box covert goes underneath Elliott Street. Yeah, that's, that's where this water would end up, as far as, as your property goes.
Do we have any more questions or statements?
So just to clarify, we're not, we're just approving the plat. This isn't the final plan, this isn't water retention, this isn't degrading, this isn't, this is just the plat for the homes to be laid out on that Pacific twelve acres.
Yes, that's correct. I, I should've explained that upfront, and, and, and I, I'll do this for everybody on the, on the board. Um, in Pryor, uh, your universal, your u- unified development code, uh, gives this board the judici, or the power for plating purposes. Um, the, uh, the, the normal process is, unless it's, there's extenuating circumstances where utilities and easements are already there, such as the last item we talked about, uh, the normal process is to have a preliminary, uh, submitter of a preliminary plat, which they have done. That preliminary plat will identify, uh, legal issues pertaining to the property, such as easements, right-of-ways for streets. Uh, they will also provide a concept, uh, utility plan, which they have done. Uh, from that utility plan, we will review that for, a, a, along with MUB, to, uh, uh, regarding the, uh, location of water, sewer extensions, uh, gas and electric extensions. Uh, we will come to this board and identify, uh, and make a recommendation regarding that preliminary plat. Uh, the, the, uh, comments that we have made regarding things that need to be, uh, added to the plat, or things that we have not seen yet, such as the hydraulics report, uh, soils report, uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan, such as that kind of thing, we have made comment in letter. Uh, the applicant will go back and make those corrections to the plat. They will go back and prepare detailed plans for those water, sewer, streets, and drainage, uh, work. And then all of that will be submitted to the, to us for review and approval at that time. The, the next step is, is that the final plat will come before this board. Now unlike a lot of things that this board undertakes i- in its normal course of action, uh, a plat, a final plat comes before this board, and when it's approved, if it's approved, when it's approved, that approval will have the chairman of the Plating and Zoning Board to, to sign that plat. That will, that, that, this board will also direct the mayor to sign that plat on behalf of the city of Pryor. It does not officially go before the city council as an item on their agenda. It is, it is the, it is under the powers of this board to, uh, approve a plat. Uh, there are, uh, numerous other signatures that have to go onto that plat, but I wanna make that clear, that there was a statement made a while ago that this will be a recommendation to the city council. In this particular instance, plating is not something that you approve and move on to the city council, under the new U D F. That was the case under the old, uh, uh, criteria, but that's not the case now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
And if they don't meet the recommendations of staff, there won't be a final plat, is that right?
There will be a final plat. If they, if the hydraulics report doesn't come in, if we can't come to an agreement on that, and they continue to move forward, we will come to this board with a recommendation not to approve it. They still have the, uh, uh, ability to appeal it, and they can appeal that to the city council. But, uh, that's how that process would go.
Okay.
So, uh, does, does?
Push the microphone?
Sorry. Happy La Valley, Lake Grove? Does this group, since, since it sounds like you're it, I mean, you kinda said, we're not it, but it sounds like you're it. Um, so does this board have experience in plats? Do you have experi, engi, I mean, are you engineers, are you? How do you know when they give it to you, so real, so really he just? I'm trying to figure out what the process is. So you, you really are the one that knows what's going on? And you tell them that, yeah, this is a good idea, and they approve it? Is, am I, am I getting it?
Yes, ma'am, I, I guess that's, that's true.
So, so you all don't really, you're just taking his recommendation?
Well.
Well, we worked out the details up here. Well, we worked out the details up here.
So you are, you have experience in this, that you can look over...
Kathy, take this.
Okay.
I don't need it.
Okay.
And it, it might help you a little bit more to understand what staff's recommending.
Well, okay, but you understand what I'm saying. I just, I just want to know that if you all are the final decision makers and recommending and giving the go-ahead, that you know what you're doing. I guess that's, that's...
I can answer it for me. I don't have all the expertise needed to make that call, as I'm well, I'm sure Mr. Powell has to rely on other people as well. But we do have a code that's a roadmap for, so I myself look at it like I'm calling balls and strikes. I look at the rulebook, and if everything meets the rules in the rulebook, then I'll call it a strike, or I'll call it a ball.
Okay.
And that, that's my only expertise, is to judge it against the rules that I've been given to go by.
So you have a rulebook that you're going to be basing all of your decisions on?
Right. Does it follow the new code?
That's all I needed to know.
Yeah, it's, it's got to follow the laws that are set forth in the city.
Okay.
And to answer your question on the experience, I did this in Oklahoma City for years ago. I did it for six years.
Okay.
And it's, yeah, I've seen a lot of plats in my time.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I just, we don't, I, I don't know any of you, and, and it is certainly a concern for me, because this is affecting me and my property, and so I just wanted to know that y'all knew what you were doing before you approved it. Thank you.
Make a motion to... One more. No, 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 no. You've got the four.
Nicole Watts, Wallace Engineering, 123 North MLK Tulsa, Oklahoma. We are in agreement with staff recommendation. We understand, you know, this is just preliminary plat, there's a lot of more things that have to be done before we can start moving dirt and have a final plat, but we have no objections to what staff has recommended. Just here if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to exit the public hearing?
I'll move we exit the public hearing.
I second.
Dunham, Ragsdale?
Yes.
Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Malor?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, staff will make a recommendation to the planning and zoning board that we recommend approval of Roosevelt Cross, Cross preliminary plat with the, with the identified comments.
I'll move that we approve this application.
She needs to read number seven first.
Okay, number seven. I'm kind of ahead of things.
Discussion of possible action to accept the plat is listed in the legal above for the applicant, Wallace Engineering on behalf of TLD Homes and Roosevelt Crossing LLC.
Okay, now, can I make my motion that we approve this plat with staff's recommendations?
Second.
Dunham, Ragsdale?
Yes.
Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Malor?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
I make a motion we adjourn. Second.
Dunham, Ragsdale?
Yes.
Glancy?
Yes.
Alvis Watts?
Yes.
Malor?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.